This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the October 5, 2022, South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners meeting. I'm going to call this meeting to order. We do have all commissioners present this evening. If you'd all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to announce that all public sessions of the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners are electronically recorded, filed, and posted to the website for public access. At this time, I'm going to ask our township manager, Tom Petrucci, to please review our public and virtual meeting rules.
Okay. Courtesy of the floor, for non-agenda items will be at the beginning and end of the agenda. Public comment will be limited to five minutes per speaker. For all listed agenda items, the board president will call for courtesy of the floor prior to the Board of Commissioners taking action on that specific agenda item. For in-person attendees, please raise your hand to be recognized, then move to the podium when directed. You will be asked to state your name and address for the record, and may then proceed with asking your question. For those participating virtually, please mute your microphone or telephone to avoid any background noise that may cause interference in the meeting. The chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name and address into the chat box. The staff member monitoring GoToMeeting will then unmute your microphone, and you will then have the opportunity to comment or ask a question. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd also like to announce that the Board of Commissioners did meet an executive session this evening to discuss legal matters. Moving on to Agenda Item 4, courtesy of the floor, is there anyone present or on virtually who would like to approach the board this evening on any non-agenda items? Sure, if you'd please come up to the microphone and give us your name and address, please. Is that turned on? Little green light. Excellent, thank you.
Okay. Hi, everyone. My name's Joan Caton. I live at 4229 Oakley Road, Allentown, off of Parkway. I have a dog grooming business that I have in this township for 29 years. And PennDOT is taking the building that I'm in. So I would like to talk about a low-income, home-based business. I am part-time. Okay, I know, you guys are fine. That's all I've ever done. It's 44 years I've done dog grooming. So a lot of my clientele is in this area. For me to go outside of the area would cause a hardship for them and for me. I'd have to start all over again. At this point, I am part-time. I work usually three to four days a week, eight to 12, to 1:00. I own two other homes in South Whitehall. The one at 4221 Oakley Road is where I would like to put a small shed for dog grooming. It would be probably a very low-impact. It's six to eight people would come in, drop the dog off, and then come back. It's not, I don't sell any pet supplies or anything like that. It's very basic business. The people, I can't afford to go someplace else. The rent is into the $2,000 to $3,000 a month. I was never planning on moving from this location. So at this point, I've tried. I've worked with Marcy Stamen out of RE/MAX to try and find other locations. It's really difficult to find it in that price range that I'm paying now and stay in this area. So I'm asking you to think about a low-impact. I know it's been on your, Greg has talked to me and said that it is on your agenda since last year, and that you haven't passed it, or, so I would really like if you could look at that for me. I don't think it would be a hardship to my neighborhood. It's a small neighborhood. I have pictures of the home, if anyone's interested in seeing, and the lot that I would put it on, that sits behind it. And I have a letter from Marcy that states that I have looked for other places to go. I'm 62 years old. I really don't want to go someplace else. I've been here. I've been in this township, basically, my whole career. So I would have retired out of this building. Unfortunately, you know, this is what happens. They're taking the business. And Barry, my landlord, is in, you know, he's in the same place, you know? So that's really all I have to say. If you have any questions, I would gladly answer them for you. But I would really love if you would consider this low-impact, and it would be definitely low-impact. And I would make it look presentable to the neighborhood. Under the 200, I think the house is 900 square feet, so it would be a 200-square-foot shed, not anything new major. And PennDOT itself is willing to help me do the improvements, so I know I would have to go through zoning and all of that. So I believe I would have that. Also, Amber, who works with PennDOT, is willing to help me quite a bit. So I appreciate your time. I know I'm on five minutes, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Joan, if I could ask you a question, please? Without making any kind of definitive statement at all, what is your timing?
Excuse me?
What is your timing on the need?
Oh, to have this?
Yeah.
Well, the way Greg explained it to me is that if you was going to approve it, then it would have to go through my neighborhood. And they're saying early April. They're not giving me a definite. I have a paper from them stating that I have 90 days after they send the letter that we need to be out. So it would have to be started in the next six months, I'm going to say.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else? Thank you.
We thank you for bringing that to the board's attention, and our staff and township manager will certainly look into that and advise our board how we can move forward. Thank you. Are there any other public comments at this time? Okay, hearing and seeing none, we'll move along to the approval of our meeting minutes. They've been distributed to the board, our September 21, 2022, meeting minutes. Are there any comments or questions from the board?
Just one, Commissioner Kelly. I'll refrain from voting on this.
Yes, absolutely. Very good, thank you. Hearing and seeing no comments on these, so I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
I'll second it. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes with four votes and one abstention. Thank you. Moving on to, we have no presentations this evening. Under ordinances, our first ordinance this evening is for discussion only. It's an ordinance reenacting, amending, and restating Chapter 144, Article 3, Fire Code of the Codified Ordinances of South Whitehall Township in its entirety, and adopting the 2018 edition of the International Fire Code with local amendments, providing that state laws control where requirements are in excess of this ordinance, and providing for a repealer, continuation, and saving clause, severability clause, and effective date. I will call on our Township Building Code official and Fire Marshal, John France, to please assist us with this.
Good evening, Commissioners. I have given you a copy of the proposed ordinance to adopt the 2018 International Fire Code, as well as the memo supporting it, at this point for discussion. This would have been done when we did the adoption of the building code, the residential building code, the commercial building code, and the plumbing code. However, because of the information we found out about open burning, I pulled it at that time for us to work on that, and of course, we have had discussions on that the past few meetings. That information is contained in this ordinance. A brief summary can say, without getting wordy, that we are carrying forward everything that we did when we adopted the 2015 International Fire Code from Chapters 1, 5, 57, 58, and 61, where we either have to insert items, or we have added things to it. It also includes changes to the as-code-written open burning section in Section 307. Again, that was part of the discussion that we had in the previous meetings leading up to this one. At this point, I would welcome discussion on this, and I will say that the review has not been completed by Attorney Zader's office, as I just finished this the end of last week and got it over to Attorney Aldifer at that time. Obviously, that is not enough time for her to review the ordinance. There's also a section, I should point out, that Manager Petrucci felt that we should add regarding the burning of recycle, or the prohibition of burning of recyclable materials. And one item I left up to Attorney Aldifer to address, because quite honestly, it is out of my wheelhouse, is if and how we should repeal the old open burning sections of our ordinance. I don't know what is best to do that, so I defer to her professional opinion on that.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from the board for this ordinance? Commissioner Osborne?
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. First of all, I apologize for not having been part of this conversation, discussion from the beginning. I wasn't able to attend the last two meetings nor the workshop. So my questions may actually already have answers, but I'm not aware of them. So I would first like to thank our new township manager, Tom Petrucci, for the addition of the DEP rules into this topic. I think that's a very insightful and important part of this discussion. I'm a little, I'm going to ask a question, and you know, you may think that this is kind of an elementary question, what are you talking about? But I'd like to ask first, what is open burning? And the reason I ask that is, I know that there, I don't have one, but I know that it's commonplace, or at least not unusual, for homeowners to have equipment, you know, that provides them the opportunity to do their, what they like to do with their equipment. But I'm wondering whether that's considered part of open burning. I think of open burning as something that's open, not contained.
I see. So in other words, you're talking about, for instance, a portable outdoor fireplace, or perhaps a chimenea being something that you may not consider to be open, as opposed to a fire ring?
Yes.
Okay. All of those are, fall under the definition of open burning. It's basically burning outside of a structure.
Outside of a house.
House residence.
Correct. Okay. So it's all open burning, even though some of it is enclosed in some ways?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay. As the ordinance has been presented to Attorney Zader's office, I'm unclear. I know that the determination was that if something is considered recyclable, then it is not eligible to be burned outside. Is that correct?
That is my understanding. I believe, Manager Petrucci, that is indeed what the law states, correct?
Correct.
And as you said earlier, thanks to him.
Yeah.
I wasn't aware of that.
It's because the township is a mandated recycling community.
So my next question is, my concern, I will say, is open burning of wood and wood products. So my question, based on that information from the DEP, again, thank you, Tom, is that excluded from this proposed open burning ordinance? We cannot burn tree branches. We can't burn, what cannot we burn?
Certainly leaves. Well, let's go with the easy.
Sure.
Items, the recyclable materials such as plastics, papers, things of that nature.
Right.
That's easy. I don't think that's what you're referring to.
Right.
Yeah, I think we all understand that. Leaves would be something that we cannot burn.
Sure.
Now, recycling-wise, we only accept items up to a certain size.
Two inches diameter, am I correct?
Three?
Is it three?
Four.
Is it four?
Is it three or three, four foot long? Three diameter, four foot long? Okay, I had that backwards.
Which is a pretty hefty branch.
Yes, it is.
So those are materials that we are providing to the residents a way of recycling them to our recycling center.
Yes.
Which we pay for in staff. Right? Recycling center?
Yes.
Okay. So three-inch diameter, four feet in length? Four-inch diameter, three feet in length? Okay. So those are materials that cannot be put under the proposed ordinance into an open burn pit?
For the DEP requirements, I believe that is correct.
That is correct.
Okay. So if something is six inches in diameter and 10 feet long, can that be burned?
Six inches of diameter, yes. 10 feet long would not meet the other size requirements, number one, of a container, as you had called it.
Yeah.
Or the size of a recreational fire, as defined in the code.
Yeah. Okay. And the reason I ask, I mean, it may sound like a silly question, but I have seen some of these structures with unburned materials in them.
Yes.
And they can look like a teepee.
Yes. Now, that is why, and you allude to that, and you weren't part of this discussion, the code would also allow for bonfires. That is really what you described.
Yes.
If it does not meet the definition of a recreational fire, it is not in a portable outdoor fireplace, I'm proposing to remove bonfires as a permitted use for reasons such as that.
And I've seen the possible beginnings of that happening, just driving around with unburned wood. So here's my personal position, and I hope it can be part of the overall discussion, but if not, I still hold, you know, my thought. I'm unlikely to support an ordinance that allows burning such as we described, which is basically a bonfire. I don't think that that is something that I can support. What I do think is maybe appropriate, which I believe we had in the past, is if some person or organization, it could even be a church. And I recall, across the street, we had several applications. I'm okay if that's done by permit.
Yes.
With that permit comes notification to the fire departments.
Yes.
And there's a fee, which can be waived, but there's certainly a fee attached. So thank you for answering all my questions. That's where I stand on this particular issue. It's the burning of wood that is not easily imaginable to be contained in a small residential yard.
To elaborate on that, as far as organizations coming in here for approval for fires, as you had experienced in the past, number one, there's no requirement in any of the codes to bring any existing building up to new standards. Likewise, those organizations that had been granted approval in the past, I see no reason to bring back before the board to get reapproval, if you will. And what you described is exactly the way that was handled. They had a fire code permit. They would notify me before the burning happened. I would in turn notify the police, the fire department, and the 911 center. I'd also discuss with them, initially at least, when I would talk to the people responsible, the safety items that were required. So yes, that could still happen, where they would come in for approval. And I've stated in the past, I have no problem with that, but under good conditions, which all the ones that came before the board previously certainly had that area and were good conditions.
So John, I guess my last question that I can think of is, I'm sure that in your position, one of your concerns is that in your responsibilities, you have to be able to determine almost instantaneously, through your experience, whether a violation that you're observing is actionable.
Yes.
I would think we wouldn't want to put you in a position of, geez, I don't know, this ordinance is so vague, I don't know what to call. Is what you're describing, is that something that you, as the, in your position, would you be comfortable with some restriction in being able to make a determination of a possible violation?
I'm comfortable with making determinations. The only thing that gets sticky is the recycling aspect of it.
Yeah.
However, people can split firewood.
Yep.
Buy split firewood also, purchase split firewood. So there are other options available. There are other requirements that we're not changing that are in the code that help to make it more easier to enforce.
Is there any, in this proposed legislation, any provision for, let's say this is a two-foot high wall, fire pit? Can the wood be five feet high? Or does it have to be within the structure?
There is a size requirement.
So the split log thing, to me, if it's inside the structure, may not be an issue. My concern is that we're burning tree branches.
Correct.
Green, whatever, wet.
To answer your question about size, pile size limited to three feet or less in diameter and two feet or less in height. That is a recreational fire.
So how high could the wood, in this case, be above the walls?
I would look at it from the base, not from the top of the walls.
Okay. So the wall could be how high?
It could be as, there's no delineation on the size or height of walls.
Okay.
Right, the pile of wood.
I got it. Okay.
I'm sorry. Okay, thank you, Herb.
Yeah. So also, another one, a burn barrel.
No.
55-gallon drum hollowed out.
No.
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 This proposed ordinance would disallow that?
Yes.
Okay. No recreational value to a burn barrel?
No.
Other than enjoying the fire?
Yeah, yes.
Thank you for your indulgence.
You're welcome.
Any other Commissioner questions or comments?
My only comment, John, is I think you did a great job with this, presenting it not only tonight, but at previously meeting, previous meetings, and also with public safety, getting their input, so thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I would agree. Thank you. Anything else? Hearing and seeing none, are there any public comments on this agenda item? Yes, so.
I guess I do have one question.
Okay.
I was asking my questions to foster discussion, but I didn't hear any discussion. So would it be logical for me to assume that the proposed legislation is what this board supports going forward, notwithstanding these issues that I'm talking about?
I'll comment.
Okay.
I came prepared to ask the same questions, but like a shorter version of it.
That's quite all right. You should have spoken up first.
Yeah.
We'll wait and see.
I should have started by applauding Commissioner Osborne for doing a great job. I don't know where all that settles. Commissioner Osborne started with, I'm not likely to agree with, and then he went through the whole logical sequence. I don't know where it lands, John. I don't, I'm not inclined to approve an ordinance that allows tree branches to be burned in the open. So I don't know if this ordinance, you know, I've looked at it, but I don't know if this ordinance allows that, or does not allow it at this point.
It does not allow that.
Okay.
And especially, certainly, in a form of, we'll say, a brush pile, or something similar to what Commissioner Osborne presented with the size of a pile of leaves, or, sorry, branches.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, Commissioner Osborne, I should point out, I don't know if you were not part of this discussion. One of the reasons that we have to do this is, when we adopted the 2015 International Fire Code, the open burning sections that are in the 2018 code are in the 2015. And we were told by Attorney Zader's office, quite honestly, and correctly, I believe, that when we adopted the 2015 Fire Code, the inconsistent ordinances that was our open burning ordinances for years are no longer being enforced. So we're actually living with the requirements of the 2015 Fire Code at this point. Trying, what I'm trying to do is trying to make them better.
And enforceable.
And, yeah.
Legally and practically.
Correct. So I don't know if you were privy to that discussion. I wanted to make sure that you were aware of that. I know the others I had told that to. And again, no problem that you weren't here. I'm just, I'd be happy to bring you up to speed on that.
Thank you. I guess one thing I hadn't heard any feedback on is what I would call a bonfire.
Yeah.
Is not allowed with this proposed ordinance. But what isn't in this ordinance that I didn't see is that there's an avenue to have that approved by a permit process.
Yeah, there is.
So maybe our board wants to discuss that, but if we don't discuss it, then that's not an option for anyone.
What would happen there is, that would be really an appeal to the Fire Code Board of Appeals. They're the ones that hear appeals on this matter. And having done many appeals with the Building Code Board of Appeals over the years, and all the years I've been here, there are actually times that the inspectors will bring, just like with the open burning from the churches, will bring people to an appeals board hearing, where we have absolutely no problem with the appeal they are proposing, but because it doesn't meet the code, we just can't say yes.
Because you don't have approval from the Board of Commissioners.
Or, yeah, we will bring them there, we're not opposed to it, but we, I, an inspector just doesn't have the ability to say, well, I'm just not going to enforce that today. We kind of have to be consistent. That's what the appeals board is for. And going back to, if you remember, when the churches and the Boy Scout troops came here, that did get approval, I have no problem with that.
But today, with the proposed legislation, there's no avenue for that to be approved?
Yes, through, they would have to appear before the Fire Code Board of Appeals.
That appeals board, though, cannot override an ordinance, where the ordinance might be silent. Is that correct or not correct?
On the, in the Fire Code, we're not dealing with the same restrictions that are placed on, for instance, the Uniform Construction Code, where there are, either needs to be that the inspector's interpretation is an error, the code does not apply, or that there is a better solution proposed. That is, that's contained in the UCC, that's not contained in this process.
The difficulty I see with that is that it could be applied inconsistently.
It could be.
Yeah.
Okay. There is a bit, well, and at the same time, I could make the case that it could be when you had to come before the Commissioner.
Yeah.
Not that it wasn't. I'm just saying, the potential would be there.
Thank you. There are no other comments, then this matter will be back to the board. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Hodges.
Oh, so we're coming back for a decision on this?
Coming back on the 19th. This is just discussion this evening?
Okay. I did have another question, and I just wanted to clarify.
Yes.
Burn barrels and incinerators are not allowed.
Correct.
That is correct. Green wood is not allowed.
Not necessarily. There is no prohibition about quality of wood, just like in a house, there is no prohibition about quality of wood that is burned. There's no moisture criteria anywhere in any of the codes related to that.
And could this be an issue with smoke?
So as was discussed previously, Fire Code not being a quality-of-life ordinance, yes, that could be the case. That would be better addressed in other ordinances outside of the Fire Code, which is strictly a life safety ordinance. Now, I have, we've had this discussion with Tom Harper, and he would be, I believe he's going to look at, if the board so desires, to have some sort of verbiage added to the conduct ordinances to make that better enforceable.
Okay, I would agree with that. Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, at this point, then, the discussion is closed, and we'll come back on the October 19 agenda. Is that the plan? Correct, very good, thank you. Moving on to our next ordinance for discussion only, motion to proceed with advertising, an ordinance of the Township of South Whitehall, County of Lehigh, and Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending the amount of the compensation payable to the Board of Commissioners as referred to in Part 1 Administrative Legislation, Chapter 50, Officers and Employees, Article 3, Commissioners of the Codified Ordinances of South Whitehall Township, and providing for a repealer clause, severability clause, and effective date. I will ask our township manager, Tom Petrucci, to please advise on this ordinance.
Thank you. Yes, so Article 7, Section 703 of the First Class Township Code was amended by Act 96 of 2020, specifically Section 703A, to increase the maximum by Act ninety-six of 2020, specifically Section seven oh three A, to increase the maximum allowable salary of each Township Commissioner to adjust for inflation. So the salary amount that the Board of Commissioners may receive is based upon the population figure for South Whitehall Township available as of the latest census, which is twenty-one thousand and eighty, and that basically puts the township in the tier for a salary amount of six thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars, since it falls between fifteen thousand and twenty-five thousand. It's important to know that any change in salary compensation or remittance of the elected office shall become effective at the beginning of the next term of any newly elected Township Commissioner. So as drafted now, this, this would not take effect until after the November seventh, twenty twenty-three election. So the compensation of the Board of Commissioners currently is four thousand one twenty-five, and this is following up on state legislation that the township needs to adopt. So if the board is following discussion, if you're inclined, I would seek a motion to advertise the ordinance.
Thank you, Tom. Are there any board comments or questions on this ordinance? Commissioner Osborne?
Thank you. I read the ordinance, so basically January of 2024 would be the first time that this, okay.
Correct.
We have two commissioners sitting on the dais this evening, I believe, that would be eligible for that raise, because they were elected to four-year terms, is that not correct?
So it would be whoever comes newly elected after that.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Because you can't, you can't set your own compensation.
Right, that's where I was going.
To your point, that's your point, right? Okay.
So if I can ask, how did this topic come up?
This is following up on, it was actually started, it was sent to the Office of the Solicitor, I think, back in May, and then it's following up on it to, to get it, to get it effectuated, essentially. It was an outstanding item, and it needs to be done by the end of the year, I believe.
I wasn't aware of that, so someone had asked our solicitor to prepare an opinion on increasing Commissioner salaries.
No, basically, there was a memorandum from the state that was circulated when this act was passed, or somewhere around that time period, and the question to the solicitor, my, my understanding was, basically, what do we need to do? And then the response was given, and it was just never completed.
Okay, I still wasn't aware of it. Here are my thoughts on this. First of all, going from a salary of forty-one hundred and twenty-five dollars up to sixty-nine hundred, that's over fifty percent increase in salary. Our job as commissioners becomes no more difficult two years from now, or in our next terms, than they are today. I think the optics of this is not good. We have residents who are struggling, trying to meet the current economic environment that we're all subject to, and here we are raising elected official salaries proposed while this is going on. I don't think of my position up on this board as a job, I think of it as public service. The fact that I'm paid a penny is a penny I didn't ask for, and a penny more is what I don't want. So my personal opinion is, I will not be supporting this if it comes up for a vote. It is not why I'm sitting up here on this board, and I don't believe that elected officials should be raising our salaries, certainly not without resident input. Sixty-nine hundred dollars, that's a lot of money, multiplied by five, year after year after year, that's a lot of money. I'm willing to do this for free.
I do have a question, Brad. I spent twenty-three years on the school board and never received a dime. School board in Pennsylvania is not compensated, and I didn't even know this position was until I came across it. But my question to you is, when you were previously a commissioner in South Whitehall Township, and then in the county, did you in fact accept your compensation?
Yeah, so those are two good points, so let me answer. One is, I would prefer, actually, as elected official, if we're talking about paying elected officials, that money goes to the school board members, especially in today's environment, where they are facing very difficult topics, they serve at no compensation at all. But to answer your question, Commissioner Kennedy, yes, I did, but I will also say this, a county commissioner today, the stipend is seven thousand dollars, so this raises it up very close to the stipend of a county commissioner. The chair of the county commissioners board is eligible for an additional one thousand dollars, which I always rejected when I was a chair of that board, and the reason I did is I didn't put myself above the other members of the board, and honestly, I didn't, I didn't turn down the salary that we're all making now. The only thing I'm saying is, I don't think we should be increasing it.
Just curious.
Yeah. But I agree, actually, and I know that there's legislation that hasn't been formal yet, but I understand it maybe in the next legislative year, where school board members, a law is being proposed to give them some kind of compensation.
That's correct.
Yeah, and I support that.
Yeah, yeah, that's, it's preliminary stages.
Yeah, yeah.
Just when I leave.
Is there any other board discussion? And just to clarify, Tom, if you could help us, this was in the 2020 law that was passed, so this is the township just complying with state law, we're not doing anything outside of the law, and we're certainly not, any of us going to benefit from a salary cap that the state has indicated for commissioners, because no one on this board will be eligible for any increase.
Correct, unless someone on the board is reelected.
Correct.
But yeah, the Township Code says each Township Commissioner may receive a salary, and if you were to receive it, these are the amounts that you would set. So you would fall under the six thousand nine fifteen for newly elected commissioners.
Thank you.
But to be clear, it's our decision, and we do not have to accept it.
Well, it says may.
Yes.
But the township has previously adopted the First Class Township Code for compensation, but the presence of the word "may," correct.
Thank you.
Any other board comments on this matter? Any from the public? If you please come up to the podium, give us your name and address, sir.
Robert Weiss, 2042 Whitehall Avenue, and I applaud all you commissioners for the work you do. I didn't realize the compensation was that low, and I applaud you for doing the job you do for that kind of compensation, and I had no idea, school board doesn't get a damn thing. That's disgusting, it really is, what school board goes through nowadays is terrible, you know, and I, my wife and I, we just didn't know that happened, we thought they were compensated in some way, and we thank you for your job, we thank you for all you do, and honestly, like I said, I thought you did, you got more compensation than you did, and I think you do deserve more compensation than you get. Nobody should have to go through all this for nothing. You put in a lot of time, people don't realize how much time you put in, and I thank you.
Thank you, sir. If there is no further discussion, is there a motion to move forward with said ordinance to proceed for advertising?
I'll make a motion.
A second, a motion and a second on the floor, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion passes four to one to proceed with advertising. Thank you all. Moving on to Agenda Item C for discussion only, we have a proposed ordinance, zoning ordinance amendment requiring planning commission review of non-residential special exception zoning appeal applications, and I will ask our Township Manager, Tom Petrucci, please explain this proposed ordinance.
I think this one, I'm going to defer to Greg, so he prepared the memorandum, so if the board's okay with that approach, I will immediately defer to Greg.
Very good, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Well, and at least two commercial land developments have required special exception approval for the zoning hearing board recently. We noticed that, and staff noticed that there's no mechanism in our zoning ordinance currently to allow for additional information to be given to the zoning hearing board, specifically from the planning commission, who is well-versed in land development implications. The zoning hearing board itself, when they review a special exception approval, it is a permitted use, but they are allowed to add reasonable conditions and safeguards to that, but if they do it in a vacuum without any assistance from other boards or perhaps even staff, well, then they're doing it in a vacuum. Other municipalities do have this requirement in the Lehigh Valley, and we felt that, well, our experience now makes us believe that we should have that as well. So I put together a draft ordinance for, to achieve that, that's on pages three through five of your packet, that is a first draft, and certainly, if you direct us to continue our work, we will do more research on that, and when we feel it's ready to go, we will send it to the planning commission, as it is a zoning ordinance amendment, for their review before, and recommendation before bringing it back to you.
Thank you, Greg, thank you for preparing this and bringing it for consideration this evening. I did have a question on Item two C, at the bottom of page four, continuing on to the top of page five, it states, the planning commission may recommend to the Board of Commissioners that the solicitor be present to represent the township at a public hearing held by the zoning hearing board on an application. I was curious, how would that happen? Is the planning commission going to send a report to the board that would be part of our agenda, and it would be an action our board would take, or how is that communication going to happen between the planning commission and the Board of Commissioners?
That depends, that's not written in yet, certainly, any way you would like that to occur, if you want a specific report from planning commission delivered to the board, for that, we can do that, or simply have that transported via staff to the board to provide in your next packet, that can also be done.
Thank you.
I have a question. I want to appreciate, Greg, I read this through, and I was surprised that South Whitehall did not have this. It's almost, as you succinctly put it, it's like a vacuum, zoning does what they wanted, and planning isn't giving any input, who has the knowledge of the township, not that zoning doesn't, but I was surprised that we didn't have that, and totally, wholeheartedly agree that we should, so that everybody's on the same page, there's transparency with everybody, right on from planning, zoning, BOC, right on down the line. I was, before I became a commissioner, there was situations where the BOC, or planning was sidestepped for problems, and I find that to be actually reprehensible, that would even be done. Thank you for, well-done job.
You're welcome.
I have a comment? I do, I have a comment, please. I'm sorry, Mike, do you want to go first?
No, no, I said you go first.
All right, I was looking at page five, letter D, where it speaks about the fourteen days to review, you have fourteen days to review it and then get back.
Yes.
Who is going to be filing this advisory report? Is that the president of the planning commission?
Generally, staff would take their recommendation directly from the meeting, compile a report, and then file it, so, yeah, community development would be doing that.
Okay.
The actual work.
Also, I just, I had a comment. It says that, where's the exact wording, that if there is no, nothing, if nothing is received, that the planning commission has no recommendations, would it be safer, maybe, to say the planning commission should respond, no comment, or okay, or some type of response either way, just so you give the full benefit to someone who maybe, you know, life happens, and sometimes things are overlooked or fall between the cracks, so would it not make sense to have planning commission acknowledge, we have no comment at this time, rather just stay silent, and maybe something would be overlooked?
And that is a possibility, the intention of that one was, in case something disastrous happens, and for some reason, we didn't make the fourteen-day cutoff. Now, that shouldn't occur, but you always want to think of, okay, we have a four, we have a time limitation put on, what happens if we don't make it? So that was my response to that question. If you want a longer period, or if you want something particular put in, where the zoning hearing board is simply notified that nothing's been received from planning commission, I would think for most cases, the planning commission would want to respond regardless.
Okay.
This just simply gives us the option of, if for some reason the planning commission does not respond, it's not holding an applicant up based on that.
I understand, thank you. Questions?
Yeah, Greg, I think you said this somewhere in your explanation. I mean, I think first, you did a great job writing this, I mean, it's pretty complex, but, you know, you wrote it as simple as possible, so thanks for that. My question is, can, in the process, can the BOC decide to act upon the planning commission advisory report without requiring the zoning hearing board review, or must the zoning hearing board review the planning commission advisory report before coming back to the board?
The intention is that the advisory report is given directly to the zoning hearing board. Certainly, at any point, the BOC can intervene, but the intention is that, for the most part, they wouldn't be, it's not a, the BOC wouldn't be a step in the process, it would be the planning commission generating the report and delivering it directly to the zoning hearing board. If the planning commission would recommend that the township solicitor were to appear, then obviously you would have to make that decision at that time.
Okay, if I could just elaborate on that, Commissioner Walk, under the municipality's planning code, the jurisdiction for decision on special exceptions lies exclusively with the zoning hearing board, it's not a matter for the Board of Commissioners. If you don't like what you see that's going to the Board of, the zoning hearing board, then, as Greg has suggested in this document, you could voice objection, and the usual way to do that is sending the solicitor.
Okay, and then my second point, on this Item C, where it reads, the planning commission may recommend the Board of Commissioners that the township solicitor be present to represent the township. Okay, that's understood.
Yes.
Okay, key words are represent the township. My thought is, there are occasions where, for continuity and for expertise, the planning commission may want the township engineer to also be present. Township engineer attends the planning commission meeting.
Yes.
And then, might be valuable for the township engineer to also attend the zoning hearing board meeting when the same subject matter is reviewed.
I can certainly add that in, I believe that would still have to go to you for approval, though, because obviously, we're spending township funds to support that.
Yeah, okay.
Any other comments? Any from the public? Is there a motion to proceed with this zoning ordinance amendment and send it over to the planning commission for review to work on this process?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to resolutions, we have a resolution amending Resolution 2020-18, which granted conditional preliminary final approval to a major subdivision plan entitled KRE Springview Commercial Two, extending conditional approval a further one hundred and eighty days. I will call on our Community Development Department Director, David Manhart. Or Greg Adams.
Greg looks ready.
Okay.
As you probably well know by now, this is an application to further develop the properties located at five five nine, five six nine, and Citronia Road and forty-five ninety Broadway. I think you're all familiar with that one. On January fifteenth, 2020, you approved the KRE Springview Commercial Two major plan through Resolution 2020-18. Since then, the applicant has been working through the conditions of approval, and you probably know some of the issues that they've been facing. So their latest extension is up in two days, so they are here to request a further one hundred and eighty days. day extension. I believe their attorney, Ed Murphy, is present to answer any questions you have.
Good evening.
Evening. So as Greg correctly said, and as we all know, we're, all of us collectively are trying to figure out a solution to an issue that the solution isn't readily apparent. And we keep trying to think of new ideas and Chief knows too, we've been to the Public Safety Commission many times, and we're still trying to identify something that works for all the stakeholders. So we're just asking for more time because that magic solution hasn't been apparent to anybody yet. So we're going to continue to try to collaborate with everybody and keep working at it. So that's why we're here tonight to seek the extension.
Thank you. Are there any board comments or questions on this extension? Any from public?
Commissioner Kelly, I always proposed that the board at least consider instead of 180 day extension, perhaps we limit it to maybe the next 45 days so that we keep the conversation going and see if there's avenue for progress.
I think that's a very good idea, and I would support that. Other board members in agreement with allowing a 45 day extension so we can keep this moving?
Sounds like a good idea.
Would the applicant be agreeable to a 45 day extension?
I don't think we have too much option here, so if that's the best we'll do, and we'll make concerted effort and we'll keep you apprised and we'll come back if we have to.
So at this time, need a motion to extend said approval 45 days. I will second that. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, motion carries.
I'm sorry, I was checking the timing of the meetings, so they would have to return by the November 19 meeting, I believe.
Okay, we'll do our best. We'll see you soon. Thank you.
November 16, sorry.
All right, thank you. Moving on this evening, we have a resolution, excuse me, appointing Patrick M. Hitchens, Esquire, as special tax counsel for South White Hill Township's business privilege tax collection and establishing compensation. I'll honor township manager, Tom Petrucci.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. So the resolution appoints Patrick Hitchens, Esquire, as special tax counsel. He is of the firm Kilkenny Law and fixes his compensation accordingly to allow the township to address any special taxation questions related to the collection of the tax or issues that come up.
Very good, thank you. Are there any board comments or questions on this resolution? Any from the public? I'll make a motion to move forward with this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to Resolution C, we have a resolution to implement Act 57 of 2022 Property Tax Penalty Waiver Provisions, and I will please ask our Director of Finance, Tricia Dickert, to present.
Hi, good evening, commissioners. On July 11, 2022, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania amended the local tax collection law to try to address some issues that they have seen when a property ownership changes hands. Currently, what happens is when a property ownership changes hands, those taxes are typically paid with settlement of the property. But when a real estate tax gets billed, actually does cause some confusion in the event the title company does not make that payment, and perhaps it's the new owner's responsibility to remit payment for it. What happens in most cases is because the deed isn't changed timely by the county, the old owner gets the bill, then the deed gets changed, and the new owner is sometimes unaware that that bill hasn't been paid. So what this bill attempts to do is give the new property owner an avenue to request a waiver of penalty that's assessed on the base amount of the real estate tax bill. So we have been in discussions with the tax collector, Lynn Ann Cosin, and she is aware that Act 57 has now been put into law, and she's confident that during the next real estate tax collectors convention, this will be a topic of conversation. But this resolution before you tonight is to just make sure that we, as a township, are following the avenues for relief that are granted to the new homeowners through this act.
Very good, thank you. I did have a question. Is this for residential and commercial?
It doesn't specify.
Not specify, okay.
Correct. So it puts the emphasis on new owner. It doesn't specify what type of property it is.
Very good, thank you. Are there any board comments or questions on this resolution? Anything from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to proceed with said resolution?
The move.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you. And on to Resolution D, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South White Hill Township to authorize the transfer of unencumbered monies from one township account to another account within the 2022 approved South White Hill Township General Fund budget. I will ask township manager, Tom Petrucci, to present.
Thank you. There's some background information that I need to review in order to explain why this transfer is required or needed. So basically, the township received its state aid payment from the Auditor General's office on September 28, 2022 for the pension plan. That was $699,361. The township is required within the next 30 days to deposit that amount into the consortium bank for the township's pension plans. So basically, the state aid doesn't, it helps offset the MMOs, which are also required to be paid out before the end of the year. But it doesn't, it doesn't provide enough money to cover all of the MMO payments. So the MMO for 2022 was $2,537,557. That is for the police defined benefit pension plan, the office defined benefit plan, the public works defined benefit, and the defined contribution for both the office and public works employees. So the township will have to move forward with allocating those funds accordingly. And the recommended way to distribute the state aid is to base it on the allocation for each plan. So that way, it sets a precedent or policy going forward to ensure that the plan participants that are, you know, that the township's receiving the state aid for, that it basically reconciles across each plan. Again, as stated, the state aid really doesn't cover the whole amount, but that's the first part of this need for this resolution is to indicate that the township will be proceeding with effectuating its MMO requirement. Okay, so the budget amount in the 22 budget was exactly the MMO, so it's $2,537,000 and change. So that gets to the second part of the need for this transfer. Basically, it was brought to my attention by our plan, pension plan provider, Gerard Pension Services, that the township needed to close out two outstanding action items that were related to the audit of the auditor general of the pension plan from the period of January 1, 2017 to December 31, 2019. So basically, the only remaining items that were outstanding from that audit was paying interest into the plan, and that is in the amount of $48,792. So when you're transferring money from one main account of the budget to another main account, in this case, the transfer would be from general government materials and public works, which Director of Operations, Herb Bender, has taken that money from his budget to then propose to the board that that be, in the amount of $48,792, that that is proposed to be added to the MMO amount under the pension so that we can complete the MMO as required by law, move forward with depositing the state aid, as well as completing the requirement for our interest payments all before the end of the year. So thank you to Herb for being a team player with the budget and also for that we can, basically, if the board's inclined to improve this resolution, we can close out a longstanding issue with the audit finding. I hope that explains the need for this resolution.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay. So with that, I'd seek a motion to approve the resolution to transfer the unencumbered monies from general government materials, public works, which is 01430002-40240, to decrease that line item in the amount of $48,792, and then to increase the pension line item, which is 01406001-40197, and to increase that line item from $2,537,557 to $2,586,349.
Very good, thank you. Are there any board comments or questions on this resolution?
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Tom, can you repeat that, please?
You can get the recording.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for the transparency in asking for this transfer. So that's one. The second one is, can you share with us, do you know, is this $48,000 odd dollars? Is it going to go into the individual pension funds or is this a penalty?
No, it gets deposited into the pension fund. So the auditor general, basically, the thought process is since the MMOs, and this is going back years, since the MMOs that were not paid on time in those years, they would have been having, they would have had the opportunity to earn interest. And so basically, the interest that was utilized to make the plan whole, so we used our actuarial valuation interest rate, which is just under 8%. And then that was for the defined benefit plan, and then for the defined contribution, we used 5% since there was no, there really is no set interest rate for a defined contribution plan, so that seemed to be the most reasonable approach.
Sure, okay. So this goes to the benefit of the employees?
That is correct.
Okay. My third and last question is this, and this goes along the lines of thanking you for your transparency without going in the past, because I don't want to do that, but my question is this. First of all, I have no problem with this. In fact, I appreciate you bringing it forward. What would be your thoughts about inter-budgetary transfers going forward? Which ones are you, you don't have to answer tonight.
I can answer you, though.
Okay.
So ideally, the budget should be structured in such a way that we have to minimize these types of transfers. Now, unexpected issues do arise from time to time. For example, this one, there's no way anyone could have possibly foreseen this as we sit here today. So basically, to answer your question, I think the budget under the direction of our finance department, I think the intent is to structure it in such a way that we'll minimize these types of transfers.
Minimize, okay, that makes sense. What are your thoughts in terms of bringing the possible need of making inter-budgetary transfers before the board and asking for approval to do that?
That is basically going to the first class township code. So I think it's pretty clear when you are transferring between two major funds that you need to do so by resolution. Where it's in one category, for example, you'll see later tonight, we have an agenda item for emergency management where there's a transfer there. That doesn't require a resolution because it's staying within the same overall budget category of emergency management. So what we're going to do is have the finance committee look at a policy as to when those types of transfers will be coming to you. But under no circumstance can we do a major fund transfer without a resolution.
You took me to the finish line. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board questions or comments? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do we have a motion to proceed with said resolution? Second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to Resolution E, resolution requesting permission to proceed with applying for Fall 2022 DCNR Grant with regard to Pavilion Three Replacement and Parking Lot Improvement Projects. Again, I'll ask our township manager, Tom Petrucci, to assist.
Sure, I will take this in the absence of the recreation director this evening. So basically, Mr. Kukets prepared a memorandum asking to apply for permission to proceed with the Fall 2022 DCNR C2P2 grant round to rehabilitate Pavilion Number Three. By rehabilitate, I essentially mean reconstruct it. So a budget was prepared to do so, and Public Works helped with preparing the budget. And the total amount of the project would be $177,279.48. Under the DCNR C2P2 program, I want to make sure the board is aware that you would have a matching fund requirement of $88,639.74. Now, that would not be within the 2023 budget cycle, that would be 2024, based on when this project is slated to be completed, possibly even 2025. So I just want to be aware, make sure you're aware, though, that if this grant is approved, which it very well could be, that you're essentially signing up for the matching requirement.
Thank you, Tom. Question on the township's portion of it, we do have an open space fund, which we can utilize for park improvements and maintenance. I know we're looking ahead to potentially 24 budget. Is that something we could potentially use funds from open space to match?
I think the answer to that question is how it's being used in the 2023 budget, you know, with the final allocation. If we look at it right now, the fund balance would allow you to do so. But the question would be, as we go through the 2023 budget process, how much of the open space fund we're using for new projects to be completed in 2023? But looking on face value, and Herb, stop me if I'm...
The other thing is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, we can use in-kind services towards our match portion, correct?
Correct.
So the parking lot and the parking spaces down there, Public Works would take that on, so that would help offset our cost of the $88,000 to help lower our cost in the end of it also.
Yeah, and to be clear, I always like to make sure, I always like to assume a match is going to be cash, just because you never know how the project's going to end up. So I just like to be open and make sure you know it's either a combination of in-kind or cash, but you know, to be safe, you should probably prepare for the worst and have a set aside the money for cash. That's how I've handled it in the past, and that's been my process.
That's the best way to handle it.
Very good. Any other board comments or questions?
Yeah, I do have a question. Attached is, actually are the estimates. There are two estimates, is that correct? One from GEA and one from Willow Play, yeah, Willow Play Works. Those are two, right? Because I saw the pictures in between, and I wasn't sure if that was a third or if that was part of the GEA because it has CFP on the bottom. So I just wanted to clarify that.
I can clarify that. So GEA actually is a Cedar Forest Products vendor. So that's who they utilize to go through their, for their pavilions. So they actually have a few different options. So they are CoStar's vendor, and they're authorized to sell Cedar Forest products. So that's how that particular contract works. So it's not a separate, it's not a separate pavilion, it's still under GEA. And the intent there, it would all depend on how the project is going to be completed. But what the township could do and what other townships have done in the past is you purchase the pavilion... you purchase the pavilion separate from the bid, under Co-Stars, and then package out the construction, or you use internal employees to conduct it. So when I say there's a lot of unknowns, and that's why the recommendation is to set the cash match aside, that's why, because we don't know exactly how, what we're going to run into before we put the project out to bid.
Okay, thank you.
I got one question. So we heard previously, the goal was to replace the structure. Why are new footers and a new foundation required?
The reason, the reason we're looking at redoing the concrete floor, the footers, everything on it, is the posts that are currently in there are poured in the footers and below the concrete slab. So to put a new one up, you're going to need new footers, so you're going to have to cut that concrete apart to get the old ones out, to pour new ones in. So you're going to be mixing and matching, and then in the winter, you got the heaving and the settling. Are we going to create tripping hazards with patching the concrete to make a new one work? So that's why we went the route of a whole new concrete pad and footers.
Thank you.
I do have one more question, please. Just for my own knowledge, just to get a feel, how long do these pavilions last? What's the typical life of a pavilion down there? And how old is Pavilion Three?
I do not have that answer, Monica. I've only been here three and a half years. I do not know how long Pavilion Three has been there. And again, a pavilion will last as long as you take care of it. It's just like a maintenance of a car. If you don't do the maintenance, at some point, your car's going to die, along with the maintenance of the pavilions, long as we keep up with it. We keep the maintenance, keep it clean, keep it free of debris, and keep the roofs clean. Instead of going with shingles, possibly go with the metal roof, which will also prolong the life of it, since it is under a bunch of trees, it doesn't get much sun to dry out. They're all different things to make them last longer.
Yeah, and if we go with the wood, it should be stained on a regular basis, so it is going to add a little bit of maintenance, but to Herb's point, it'll help it to last longer.
Is there any other material other than wood, like composite?
Sure, we could, we could look at composite materials as well.
Yeah, you could look at using a wood structure roof with metal posts and metal beams. Again, you have the rusting, but is it going to last longer than wood? Again, it's going to come down to the maintenance aspect of it.
Right, right, and I'm thinking ahead, too, what will the cost be for the maintenance?
Yeah, you're a hundred percent correct. We got to take all that into the factor before we pick a final design and everything like that.
Thank you.
And I think Herb, what I, we talked about also is citing it. So some of the discussions we've had with flooding in the Parkway are going to come into play. If we put it right down next to the creek and it floods five times a year, and that water's constantly battering it, versus if we find a location maybe a little bit higher up, that could help the pavilion last. So I think we've had a preliminary discussion with Mike also.
Very good, thank you. Any other board comment? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do we have a motion to proceed with said resolution?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it. We have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to motions this evening, we have a motion granting permission to Township Manager, Tom Petrucci, to register membership with International City County Management Association, ICMA, and Association for Pennsylvania Municipal Management, APMM. And Tom, if you would present.
I just want to point out, there was one more resolution. We can do mine and then go back to the chief. Okay. All right. You don't mind if I do the...
Right ahead.
All right.
Apologize for that.
Mine's quick.
Going out of order.
So I'm seeking approval from the board to allow me to proceed with the membership for the International County City Management Association, as well as the Association for Pennsylvania Municipal Management. The benefits are as follows: professional support, networking, participation, and training opportunities, guidance and education on important topics such as leadership development, citizen engagement, ethics, finance and budgeting, personnel management, public safety, community branding, and the efficient, effective delivery of public services. I will slightly amend my request. I have learned that ICMA only runs on the calendar year, so if I were to get the membership now, it would only go to the end of the year. So I would seek to start that membership January first of next year, and then, but the APMM is a very, is a very low amount for the membership, and they do prorate it through the end of the year. So to save the township the thousand dollars between now and the end of the year, I would just simply start at January first for the ICMA membership. And like I said, the APMM is, I believe it's a hundred and fifty dollars prorated.
Very good, thank you, Tom. I appreciate you exploring these memberships that will help you in your position in the township, and I'm happy to support you in that endeavor. Are there any board comments or questions on this motion?
I just have a comment, Tom. When I read this, I was somewhat surprised. Are you, read it as if we've never had this in the township?
I actually don't know the answer to that. I think, I know John Hammer many years ago was a member.
And since then, you don't know?
Since then, I don't know.
You don't know, just don't know?
Correct.
Okay, it's excellent, I think it's a great idea. We benefit as a township.
Thank you, yeah, I'm looking forward to it, if you approve it.
Any other comment? Any from the public? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve this motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, motion carries. Going back up to resolutions, and I'm not trying to slight you, Chief Dorni, I apologize. We have a resolution requesting permission to proceed with applying for Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency Local Law Enforcement Support Grant Program. And Chief Dorni, if you would please explain this grant opportunity for us.
Yes, thank you, good evening, Commissioners. We're requesting permission to apply for the PCCD grant for Local Law Enforcement Support Grant Program. The police department would like to utilize the eligible funds to upgrade and replace our body worn cameras and in-car camera systems. Our current system, which is WatchGuard, has been purchased by Motorola and is no longer being supported and will no longer be available in the coming years. The department will be forced to upgrade these items in the next two years and would like to seek the eligible funding under this grant to upgrade to the Axon system for an approximate cost of six hundred and thirty-five thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. It's actually going to be slightly higher than that, right around that price frame. We're working out some budget details right now with them. I will say, this is something, this is a great opportunity right now with technology that is advancing on a regular basis, and I will say that with the purchase of WatchGuard by Motorola, it has been their intent, unfortunately, to phase out WatchGuard, which was their competition. So I've had multiple conversations with WatchGuard/Motrola, and moving forward, they will not be an option. So the current hardware and software that we have will essentially be unsupported and will not, we're at end of life. So this is a great opportunity for this grant, there are no matching funds, and it will take us, the equipment that we have currently is slightly outdated, we've had it for a while, and the new technology is a better product for us as a department, as a township. There's a lot of fail-safe factors in there that will prevent anybody from not turning on their camera, it's got GPS located in it, so if two officers are in the same geographic area, and I turn my camera on, I will turn his camera on as well. That way, we capture more data, we're not losing video footage, and it's syncing everything together. And one of the good factors in the new technology in the in-car camera system is they have license plate readers built into the cameras themselves, versus having external cameras on the outside of the car. And now we're getting every single car, all twenty-three of those, with that ability to read plates versus the ten cars that we have now. So the data that we're pulling in, and also having cloud storage built into the system, it prevents us from having server failures and things where we could potentially lose data. So, and it's guaranteed, CG just compliant, meets all the career requirements, and it's a much better product than what we have right now. And I think this is just the perfect timing for the opportunity to be able to put in for that. And I have spoken to our local legislators, who are in support of us and will be pushing for us to get this. So we're very hopeful that we should do that.
Excellent, well, thank you for explaining that, Chief. It certainly does sound like a wonderful opportunity for the township, for the police department to upgrade without a matching cost to the taxpayer. So thank you for bringing this to our board. Are there any board comments on this resolution?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions, Chief. Is any of this budgeted, or is this all in future budgets?
It will be potentially the future budget. We were looking at it, we kind of knew it was coming, maybe two, three months ago, where we got the kind of, hey, dear John letter from WatchGuard indicating, by the way, we want you to buy new products from Motorola, not WatchGuard, we're no longer supporting. You won't be able to buy any future WatchGuard products. So my intention, Herb and I had had this discussion right before Tom had come, and we had discussed it, my goal was to budget this for 2024, and when this opportunity came up, I think it's a great opportunity to do it now, if possible. So we kind of have a backup plan in place if the grant does not come through, but I'm pretty, I don't want to say pretty confident, but I think in this day and age, to be able to, one of the facets of this grant is to upgrade current technology, and one of them specifically is body cameras, and that is a big push across the country. And quite frankly, we're not in a position anymore in law enforcement where you do not have a body camera on. And I'm not willing to risk the department, risk the township liability aspect by having outdated equipment that will not work.
Okay. My second question is, you know, it's a sizable cost. What's driving the cost? Is it simply numbers of cars, numbers of devices?
Data. The fact of, the cameras themselves are not the expensive part, it's the storage of data. Cloud storage alone is much more expensive than a server. However, it's much more secure than your server. So a business model for most of these companies and technology moving forward is the storage of your data. That's where they make their money. The products themselves are slightly expensive, but it's the storage of the data where they make their money every year. The good part about the program that we are looking at with Axon, which is a TASER product, every two and a half years, they will upgrade for free the cameras, the body cameras. So every two and a half years, they're going to give us the brand-new camera that comes out, regardless whether yours is still functioning, broken, it doesn't matter, you get a brand-new camera. And if you have new technology, that new technology comes with that camera free of cost. So it's kind of a recycling ability to get the latest and greatest without paying for it. It's thrown into that package. There are alternative methods of paying on a five-year plan as well to lower the cost if it wasn't a grant opportunity. Ideally, we could get one lump sum, pay for it all upfront, that way we don't have that yearly payment to do across five years. But that is an option if that does not come through with the grant. That's something we could minimize our payments on a yearly basis versus paying one big lump sum. So there are some options out there.
Okay, thank you.
And just, just so the board knows, it is in the 2023 budget for the lump sum payment. So if the grant would not come through, we have found a way to fund this, to get the police department what they need.
Thank you, Herb. What is the, do we have a timeline for when the grant might be approved?
It is due next week, so I'm hoping to get an answer potentially by the end of the year.
Oh, that's right.
So hopefully, we'll have that answer maybe around the time that we actually adopt the budget. So...
Excellent. Thank you. Any other board questions? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do we have a motion to approve, to move forward with said resolution?
The move.
I'll second it, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
You're very welcome, thank you for bringing that to us. Moving on to Motion B, we have a motion to approve proposed next steps outlined regarding appointment of candidates to the current vacant positions. I'll ask Tom Petrucci, Township Manager.
Yes. Board of Commissioners, I'm respectfully requesting you table this matter until I can bring you additional options.
Okay, we can certainly do that. A motion to table?
Motion.
Second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to Motion C, we have a motion to approve budget transfers within the 2022 Emergency Management Services budget. I'm not sure who's presenting on this.
I believe Herb Bender is.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Emergency Management is respectfully asking to transfer a thousand dollars from the general government account into the community event account. Due to some of the events that Emergency Manage has done and helped the township with, we are just a little over budget there, so we just want to move the money from one line item to another line item to bring it back to being whole, that's all.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions on this item?
I just have a comment, some of the, some of the activities that the Emergency Management has done in the township, just recently, in the last, what, couple of weeks, have been outstanding. So for that, for that amount of money, and it's in the budget, I think it's well worth it, thank you.
Any other comments by the board? Any from the public? Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to correspondence and information items, I'll ask Tom to please go through these items for us this evening.
First is an announcement of the current vacancies on boards and commissions. One, Civil Service Commission has two alternate vacancies. The Green Advisory Council has three vacancies. The Landscape Shade Tree Commission has two vacancies. The Park and Recreation Board has one vacancy. The Public Safety Commission has one vacancy. The Environmental Advisory Council has three vacancies, and the Zoning Hearing Board has three alternate vacancies. Announcement of the upcoming meetings, the details are always posted on the website. Monday, October 10th, Parks and Recreation Board, 7:00 p.m. Tuesday, October 11th, Planning Commission Comprehensive Plan Workshop, 7:00 p.m. Wednesday, October 12th, Civil Service Commission, 10:00 a.m. Monday, October 17th, Budgets Workshop Special Meeting, 4:00 p.m. Monday, October 17th, Green Advisory Council, 6:00 p.m. Wednesday, October 19th, Board of Commissioners Meeting, 7:00 p.m.
Thank you, Tom, and thank you for reading the current vacancies on boards and commissions. If anyone is interested in applying and serving on any of our boards or wants further information, you can certainly go to our website or call the township for information. We would love to meet you and discuss.
Commissioner Kelly, may I jump in just one second? Just to clarify, we've made a change in the Civil Service meeting for next week, on the 12th, is going to be postponed to 10:00 a.m. on the 19th. It will be the following week in the morning, just due to scheduling conflict and getting some business done prior to that meeting. So thank you.
Very good, thank you.
And that will be posted and advertised correctly.
Okay, and the change will be on the website also, to notify, thank you.
It will be the 19th at 10:00 a.m., the following Wednesday.
Moving on to old business, I'll call on our Director of Township Operations, Herb Bender, to review Ware's Dam.
Yes, we have made some progress this week again with Ware's Dam. A lot of the smittles are in, they are being looked over. The Porta Dam Company was out, took a couple more measurements, so that smittle should be cleared up pretty quickly. And we were, before all the rain came this past weekend, we were able to get in and get the measurement for the sleuth gate. So now we do know what size we need, that is being sent to the fabricator to be, start being built. We do not believe it is going to make it by the end of this year for the sleuth gate, but we are still going to try to get all the concrete work completed this year, and then they will relocate back to the township in the early spring to put the new sleuth gate in and wrap this project up then. But we are looking to get it started, and pretty far along this year yet.
Excellent, thank you for that update. Any board questions on that, from the public? Okay, on to old business, Item B, I'll ask our Director of Community Development, Dave Manhart, to please update us on the comprehensive plan.
Yes, so as Tom mentioned, we have our meeting, our Comprehensive Plan Workshop meeting, next Tuesday, and we will be reviewing the final version of the land use plan, reviewing the implementation plan, as well as a draft of the comprehensive plan, is the intent. We have some work to do, but our intent is to have that for you by Tuesday. And, you know, we're working diligently on that and hope to have that to you.
Very good, thank you, Dave.
Yep.
Any board comments or questions? Any from the public? Moving on to direction and discussion this evening, Item A, we have... Item A, we have sidewalk deferrals on Cracker Sport Road. And Dave Manhart?
Yes, so, yeah, this is the first set of projects we're calling in for the sidewalk deferral. The sidewalk deferral policy was adopted in August of this year. It formalizes the process for us to call in deferrals. The process before was very informal. So I thought having, establishing this formal procedure puts everybody on notice. We're all following the same rulebook, so to speak. So I think I'll just go through the procedure and introduce the topics as they come up in the, in the procedure. Initial request recommendation. So that initial request recommendation for this location, there was a project along Cracker Sport Road that was before the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission required sidewalks to be installed in that location. We looked at our maps and our records and there were adjoining sidewalks that were deferred on three adjoining properties. The recommendation was made to pass the motion to call in the deferrals or recommend to the BOC that they call in refer, deferrals for that, those properties. That was passed unanimously, six zero. So that started this process and got us to developing a procedure. The second step in that procedure is to prepare background. So in your packets, there's a sidewalk deferral map that shows the location of the sidewalks that were before the Planning Commission. So that's 4815 Cracker Sport. And then you can see the adjacent sidewalk deferrals at 4845 Cracker Sport, 4731 Cracker Sport, and 4635 Cracker Sport. In the packet, you'll also see a copy of the notice we sent to the property owners that we will be discussing the sidewalk deferrals at this evening's meeting. And we have the packets for each of the individual properties, including the resolutions and the approved plan. So those were all, I believe we forwarded those to the property owners as well. We were contacted after they received the notice and we kind of explained the situation. So that gets us to step two and three. So three was notify property owners. We're at step four, present to the BOC for direction. So this is where we're at. We presented the memo that explains the initial request as well as the background information packet. Following the staff presentation and courtesy of the floor, BOC will make, decide whether to pursue the recommended call-ins. So what we're doing is standardizing this process, giving property owners an opportunity to not be blindsided by the call-in. So that's where we're, where we're at.
Good. Thank you, Dave. Are there any board questions or comments at this time?
My only question would be if someone in the audience is affected by this or wants to speak about it that, that we hear. Thank you.
If you'd come up to the microphone, sir, and please give us your name and address.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jeff Edwards. I am one of the owners for the 4635 Cracker Sport Road building. I received this notice last Monday, so what I'm trying to understand, I guess, is, is this to call in old deferments or is this to complete some construction along Cracker Sport Road? Is it a case by case situation or are we looking at the, we're going to sidewalk the, the Cracker Sport Road and this is where we're going?
So the intent is to, generally when we're looking at constructing sidewalks, we try and get as large a segments as we can so that we don't, aren't left, left with a patchwork. And part of the deferral, you were, applicants were granted deferrals instead of waivers to construct sidewalks. So in this case, this is a deferral. Calling in the deferral would mean that construction of the sidewalk would commence.
Okay.
And it's taken on a case by case basis depending on when project comes up, comes up or based on requests that come in.
So it is a case by case because like in my case here, this resolution was adopted by the previous owner. The expansion was never completed. And now I have a tenant in there that has a long-term lease that's, I guess we financed up. So it's either a big project like this comes out of our pocket, I can't just defer it to the tenant. And in the real estate market, when you have signed a lease, you've given them improvements, you've maximized that, that rent that's coming in. So at the end of the day, until that, that lease is completed, it's either going to come out of the owner's pocket or you can't put it back on a tenant for any kind of tenant improvements. This tenant is in there until 2030, so it's a long time before we could even recoup the money that we put into the tenant fit-outs and, and the initial leasing. So it's kind of like a twofold here. The, this, this resolution was adopted with a previous owner for a project that never happened. And how do you do a case by case?
So, and I, this is exactly why we noticed you and brought you into the board to talk about it. And it's really at the pleasure of the board, whether, how they want to proceed with it. It's just the recommendation that we have an opportunity to increase sidewalks in this location. How do we get it done?
How much sidewalk, or how much sidewalk is along Cracker Sport Road now?
None until you get down to Eck.
Yeah, because, I mean, I'm there in my building often and I never really see anybody walking up and down Cracker Sport Road. So I'm just trying to understand why all of a sudden we're building sidewalks.
So the, the other related to, in this area, there are the warehouses that went on along Eck Road, so Chapman's and Eck, not Chapman's. So there are, is a significant section of sidewalk, kind of just off of the math to the, to the west. Anytime we can get pedestrians or potential pedestrians off of roadway, we want to do that for safety purposes. And I guess the other piece of this is you have to start somewhere and at some time. So having this discussion as to when to start and move things forward is an important piece of that.
I guess, what's the next step?
So next step is if the board chooses, the board will choose to proceed, pursue the recommended call-in and then we prepare a res, come back with a resolution to proceed with the call-in.
I guess, I don't, I can't explain myself where, where this puts me into a bind. We also own 4731, which is vacant. So now we're constructing, oh, $30,000, $40,000 worth of sidewalks for a promise that somebody who owned a built property before us that never built anything for.
This is the hard part.
Does this, does this resolution, is it a covenant with the land or is it a part of the deed? Does it, does it run with the property?
It runs with the property.
Yeah, well. Makes it tough.
And especially in this case, because they are old resolutions. These are from 2000.
10 years old.
Yeah. So, and circumstances definitely change and ownership changes. And that's exactly why we want to have this conversation on how to move things forward. Thank you, thank you for coming and responding.
I guess, so as we move along with this resol, this discussion, it's going to be a case by case, then I guess there's a provision for us to come and have some kind of a case by case discussion on yes or no.
Yeah, and that's going to happen. So you, this is courtesy of the floor, so you can explain your case. We may hear from the other adjacent property owner and then the board will discuss and decide what to do.
Okay.
So thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Oh, one more. Yeah. Sir, I'm sorry, I missed your first name. Jeff, okay, I'll address you later, okay?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. First of all, I want to compliment you on a fantastic job you did on this building, the building business. I know what it takes to do this and you did a first class job.
Thank you, sir.
My name is George Bush. I'm the owner of 4845 Cracker Sport Road. The building was recently completed several years ago. And this is my engineer, Rob Peligian, from Bascom and Seeger. One of the concerns that we have is that where we're located, there's a lot of obstructions to the east and to the west, which would not make a continuous sidewalk. Further to the east, there's a big concrete embankment, which actually goes to the cartway of the road. And then to the west of our property, there's a bridge that crosses a stream that travels underneath the road. The, the technical, the technical aspect of that can be better explained by Rob, but I just wanted to kind of start with that.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Rob Peligian, Bascom and Seeger, soon to be at, hopefully by Monday at 2202 Belmont Street. I'm actually moving my business to South Whitehall. So anyway, I did the design work for Mr. Bush in 2014 and 2015 and we received a conditional approval with a deferral of the sidewalk at that time. And I presented the plans to the Planning Commission, also the Board of Commissioners. The issue is, number one, there would be a patchwork of sidewalk at this location because there's a gap between what would be the Covenant Transport Property, Westerly Property Line, and Mr. Bush's Easterly Property Line. That's owned by Eric Olspinoza, that property that I believe was commonly referred to as Crackerport Ponds. To the west, as Mr. Bush indicated, there is a, a bridge over a tributary to the Cedar Creek, Little Cedar Creek runs out there. And that was subject, and is subject to FEMA flood mapping. Part of the condition when we obtained this approval of this from the zone, of this land development from the zoning hearing board, was to obtain a letter of map amendment, otherwise known as a LOMA from, from FEMA, which we did for probably 95 to 98% of the property. However, the southwestly corner of the property and that section of Cracker Sport Road still remains in the floodplain of the Little Cedar Creek. Also, there are wetlands issues around our site. Our site was determined not only by an independent consultant, but by PADP as a result of some accidental tree removal during the construction of, of Mr. Bush's property. DEP was actually on-site, the township was notified of it and the township was out at that time. And the DEP identified no wetlands on 4845 property, however, they are adjacent in this Crackerport, Cracker Sport Ponds property owned by Eric Olspinoza. So there would be a patchwork of sidewalk along this property because there would be a gap unless the township is going to condemn and then subsequently construct that property. I did a property survey that included part of Mr. Spinoza's as part of my work and the township does not have, there was never a subdivision plan or land development plan that convey title into Cracker Sport Road entirely within South Whitehall Township. Not only that, I can tell you, I personally did the survey work out there. And the bridge that Cracker Sport Road traverses, the Little Cedar, is nowhere near large enough to support a sidewalk. So you would literally have a sidewalk from nowhere to nowhere in front of this property. And I do understand the philosophy of creating walkable communities and I support them. However, in this particular instance, I don't see the advantage of approximately 140 feet of sidewalk that would go from nowhere to nowhere. So we're here tonight, I'm here to answer any questions you might have. I do know this property intimately. Thank you for your time unless you have questions for me.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. First of all, I'd like to thank both Jeff and yourselves for coming to the meeting. It was within the last three months certainly that we revised the process to allow a comment period for exactly why you came before us. I, I was, thought personally that was very important so that we hear, you know, the particular issues that you may want the board to hear about. And I thank our board and the staff for coming up with a process that allows you to, to say what you would like to say personally. I'd like to learn a little bit more about this, and I mean making a, a site visit so that I can get a fuller understanding of the topic that we're talking about. I also will talk with staff about what's driving this particular call-in, what's, who's benefiting from this that exists today. But more importantly, I'd like to understand the geography and the issues. But one of them, Jeff, you, you touched on, which was one of the examples we talked about with the turnover of property and property owners. You inherited this, now it's probably in the recorded deed as I understand it, but these things are typically not on the top of your mind when you buy the property. In this case, you, you're the direct owner from the previous owner, but you could have easily been three or four owners later. And this kind of information is lost. So I personally would ask the board to at least consider taking this under advisement so that those who may be interested in making a site visit have the opportunity to do that.
Thank you for your comment, Commissioner Osborne. I was thinking along those same lines, certainly as we're listening to testimony regarding wetlands and a break in this path. I understand the township's desire to have a connectivity there, but it sounds like there's certainly engineering questions and guidance that I would look to staff to give us much more information to make an educated decision.
And some of that, there, there's a little bit of chicken, the, chicken and the egg because we do have to go in and do some more planning and engineering and get the engineers involved. The flip side of this is sidewalks were shown on the plans that were approved. So in theory, they were designed and thought about at the time of the application was submitted and as it went through land development. If it wasn't, there would have been a waiver. So things, and there's different levels of design for them to be on the plan. We've been, lately, we've been asking for, you know, full design, full stormwater cals that include the, the sidewalks. You know, and especially dealing with the approval 20 years ago, it could have been some different version of that. So there's definitely engineering that needs, needs to happen with it. And I think tonight, we're really, this is our first one that we're going through, so we're learning as we go. And hearing response from the property owner in a public forum is very important, so.
If I may, just as a comment on what was just stated by the Community Development Director, and appreciate all that. This project was done approximately seven years ago. And at that time, a design was made for the sidewalk. However, we were told by the Planning Commission that waivers were not being granted. Otherwise, we would have requested a waiver. But when we pleaded, when we pled our case to the Planning Commission, that it would go from nowhere to nowhere, that there were wetlands issues on either side. I mean, there's actually a gap. I have photos I'd be happy to share with the Board of Commissioners, but there's a gap in the curbing that got put in there. And, but they would not grant a waiver. They only would grant a deferral at that time. So there, it was designed, but they understood. So, there, it was designed, but they understood at that time that it would be extreme, it would be a patchwork, that it would only be one small section. So, just, just, I mean, the twenty-year-old plan, I can't comment on, but, but the one that we did in twenty-fourteen and twenty-fifteen, those, that design criteria was definitely met, that was brought up by the Township Engineer and Community Development Department, along with the Planning Commission. Just wanted to correct that.
Thank you.
I kind of have just a basic summary statement of, I think, the discussion. I thank both owners for coming in. I think we all agree in principle that sidewalks provide safety. The issue that's being presented is whether and how that can be practically achieved based on the conditions. So, site visit and further discussion, you know, with maybe more detailed drawings of how the safety objectives can actually be achieved at, at, you know, all these properties would be beneficial.
Yeah, and something that just, because this is our first one, and we're working through it, I think, including in the packet, site photos, like actual photos on the ground is gonna be helpful. So, we'll certainly do that for our next ones. But, yeah, we can arrange site visits and go out there if we need, if requested.
As I said, we do have some photos, I'd be happy to show them to you this evening, if you're interested.
Are there photos you could leave with us?
Yes.
I'd be interested in having that, sure? Sure, we can, yeah, okay, thank you.
Photos aren't identified per location, but if visit is made, easily seen, because it's not a long question.
I believe the last couple photos are the ones that show the bridge. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good job.
Are there any other board discussion at this time? There was this, go ahead.
I do have a quick question. Dave, you probably know her, Herb, are there any Lanta bus stops along that area right now?
No, Lanta does not go down that way.
Okay.
I'm trying to think if there's one up near Housman, Ridgeview and Housman. So, depending on what route it is and how they're coming, this is a potential route to, pedestrian route to the warehouses, is one of the concerns. But, you know, it's, Housman is in sidewalks, there's some sidewalks going in, in front of the Long's Water property. So, the Planning Commission has made every effort to not waive or defer sidewalks, because this process is difficult.
I certainly, that's a great question. I think it would be helpful for us to understand connectivity, if there is Lanta in the area, and what that means for the, this areas being more developed with warehouses and employment opportunities. So, you could include that information to us, as well as photos. Thank you for bringing these photos to the board. Maybe we could scan them in and distribute them to the board by email, that would be helpful, too.
If any of the board members would want to go out there, I do know where these gentlemen are talking about with the wetlands and the culvert. The culvert is actually ours, we own the culvert there. So, if anyone would like to take a trip out there, I can gladly go out there with you and explain to you what is ours and everything also.
Thank you. Maybe you could email the board, and we could let you know of our availability, because I think that's a great opportunity for us to see what we're looking at before we decide.
Sure.
There are no other board comments? Are there any public, further public comments? So, at this time, is it the pleasure of the board that we table this to gather further information before we proceed with any action? Okay, so I'll make a motion to table.
Yeah, second that.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, thank you both for coming this evening.
And if I could just follow up, just with regard to the procedure, we will go back to number three, the notice of property owners, the next time it comes before the board. So, property owners will be notified if, next time it comes back.
Very good. Thank you. Moving on to direction and discussion, item B is the Davis Smith Open Space Sign, and Herb Bender, if you would please help us with that.
Sure. When the Davis Smith Open Space Land was donated to the township, it was agreed upon that a sign be put up. I have attached four options for consideration. We're just looking for some feedback on which sign the board would like to see go up. We're trying to pick one that, if this would ever happen again, that we would just replicate and put the same sign up, obviously with the different name on it, but this way, we're standard, and we keep it moving forward when something like this does happen, so we can mark the land and be thankful for the person or the resident who has donated the land to the township.
Thank you for bringing these options to us. I'm looking forward to seeing a sign on that property, it's very exciting.
And again, if you have other options that you think might work better, we're open to any suggestion. I know it was part of the agreement, so I just want to try to get that done this year, so it is up right away, so we're not dragging our feet on doing our part after he did donate all the land to us.
Agreed. And I agree with your comment that it would be good to have this sign as a template that we will replicate in future open space properties that the township may acquire, so. Are there any comments from the board on Commissioner Osborne?
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. I know you sent out an email, Herb, and you may know, others may not, that I didn't respond. And my first reaction was, I didn't think that this was a decision that needed to be brought to the board, honestly. However, you did add something that I wasn't aware of, and that is, you're kind of looking for a standardized thing, which to me, now makes sense. I think of Allentown, and whether you like the signs or not, I happen to like them, but their signs are uniform for all the parks, and it's, it's a, it's trademarking, it's marketing. So, in that regard, I will defer to my fellow board members, I don't have an opinion about what would be best, but I do like the fact that you're thinking about, you know, some consistent design.
Along those lines, the sign number two, Richland Township, I like that they have the seal of the township there. I don't know if we have one, and if we don't, is that something that we can create and brand and use, something along those lines to be our identification?
If we were to put our emblem there, it would be what we currently have, the bridge that says South Whitehall Township. With being that small, I don't know how clear it would be. I mean, or we could just use South Whitehall Township in the circle, so it sticks out more. I, I just don't know how clear in that little circle the bridge would appear.
I agree. I think the fifth sign, I'm not a fan necessarily of the font, but it states, "South Whitehall Township, the property is preserved, we're recognizing Davis Smith as open space." I mean, that is readable, it's easy to see.
The one thing, we can change the font and send it back out, and we can all agree upon that, if everyone's okay with this. This sign would be metal, where the other one that we were just discussing with the bridge, that is a wooden sign, so that would require maintenance, a lot more than this metal sign would be, where we're gonna get two poles, like out front, set it in, anchored in, it's metal, it's gonna be there for years.
And I think we can combine, like, if there's elements from the Richland Township sign, we can certainly take some of that out and combine the two signs and come up with a proposal.
Yeah, like, if you like the font and the Richland Township sign, we can change the lettering to that font also.
It seems readable, that's, I'm just thinking, when someone's driving by, easy for a resident to find out.
That makes sense to me as well. This sign, you know, both the outline of it and the font, and then the last sign, if I had to describe them compared to the other two, these are both stately, or, you know, a little more stately, maybe that means official. So, I kind of like them for that reason.
I agree. The last one just says that the same font.
Yeah. If you took Richland font and put it on the last one, that might be interesting to see.
Okay. Would you like me to make the layout with that font, and then I'll send it out to the full board and see how it works? Or should we just move forward with this sign that we see here with the Richland Township font on?
Rest your judgment. Sure.
Yeah. All right, we'll make it happen, we'll get it ordered and get it installed right away then.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Moving on to agenda item thirteen, courtesy of the floor, if there's any member of the public, either here in person or online, that would like to address the board, now would be the time.
I would like to address the board.
Of course.
Good evening, once again, to all of you. Just have a few things that I'd like to say about the teamsmanship that you have here with your staff at South Whitehall Township. I know you are all aware of this. Several members of the finance team have been hard at work, trying to collect all of the data in preparation for the seventeenth workshop meeting. I would like to extend my most sincere appreciation to Township Manager Tom Petrucci, and obviously, Director of Operations Herb Bender. They have been absolutely phenomenal through this process, as have all of the department heads. Twelve days ahead of the seventeenth workshop meeting, and two days ahead of schedule. If it pleases the board, I would like to give you all documents that you can review from now until the seventeenth, when we meet for our budget workshop.
Thank you, Tricia, that is fabulous, and thank you to
Thank you.
Tom and Herb, and all of the department heads for, and staff. Very impressive that you have this information to us ahead of schedule. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Well, this is very helpful, it gives us this information well in advance, so that we can review and prepare for our first budget workshop, so thank you for helping us to do our jobs.
The, I know you all know, we've navigated to a new budget software, Being Clear Gov. The foundation of that software is to be a web-based budget. I'm a paper person, though, and I'm hoping at some point to get over that. So, I've, I've, we've done our best to provide you with good paper, even though the platform is significantly web-based. At the conclusion of tonight's meeting, I will send all of the board members a link to that web-based platform that will be accessible only to the five of you until we meet on the seventeenth.
Thank you, Tricia.
That's a, this is a paper copy of the web link. The difference is, the web version, you have a little bit more usability, you can hover over some of the graphs to see some of the figures, just got a few more bells and whistles, and you're gonna find in that print copy.
Anyone else from the public? Any comment this evening? Hearing and seeing none, we will move to agenda item fourteen, I need a motion to authorize payment of invoices and disbursements.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, I'll second that.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
There is no executive session this evening, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.